Good morning, everyone, by the way. So, good morning, everyone.
Morning, hello.
Hello. Delighted to welcome Bob Cotton to come and talk to us this morning on leadership. I mean, it is not hard to, for everyone to know that probably leaders are facing the biggest challenge since the Second World War in terms of it, and it is going to change and challenge leaders to think differently. We've got a lot of reports coming out at the moment that if you take London as an example, only 15% of employees are expected to return to London pre-September and only 40% by the year end. So, this is going to change work patterns and lots of people are going to have to think very differently. At the same time, lots of people have rediscovered communities and they've enjoyed rediscovering communities. There seems to be a whole move towards localism. So, there's a whole change going on and there's almost two narratives taking place at the moment as well between the generations. So, leadership is going to have to bridge all that and change as we go. So, delighted to welcome Bob to come and talk to us and we're going to do a Q and A session with Bob. He's going to talk for a few minutes and we'll do Q and A and open up to everybody as well. Bob is well-known to everybody as a former chief executive for the British Hospitality Association, a former government advisor and obviously was a communications director with Sedex for many years. So, look, welcome, Bob. And over to you.
Thank you very much. And over to you. Thank you and welcome all. What I wanted to do this morning, probably, you know, for a short period just to start with, is set out a few ideas and a few thoughts and really want to focus on what I term the modern challenges in the future rather than sort of adopt a textbook approach about what leadership is or what it should be and all the rest of it because I think the world has moved on a little bit from that, albeit that leadership, in my view, in the future will never be more important as an essence of management of business, et cetera. So, I just wanted to start off with by saying I can only really draw on my own experiences of leadership and broadly I want to sort of stick to the sector in which we work because I think there, while some things stretch across all sectors, there are some issues relate specifically to hospitality, which I think is our area of interest. The first point I want to make is, in my own experience, just from my background and where I've been and what I've achieved is, I actually think I have learnt more about leadership from observing leadership from my immediate boss and the people I worked with rather than necessarily my university background or going on various leadership courses or anything like that. It's about observing leadership from leaders, trying to work out what works for you and what resonates with you and actually coming to a set of values, if you like, that as a leader you feel are important in the way you conduct yourself in a leadership position. And everyone will be different, but I think it is about going through that process. And if I just mention that, I can think of three or four people who had a very significant impact on me when I was observing them through my working life. The first was a guy called Alan Shepherd, who was my sort of functional boss when I worked at Chrysler. He ran one of the car plants and he actually went on to be the chief executive of Grand Met for a very long time, a very powerful leader. And he was the first person I ever saw walking the shop floor, talking to ordinary people and genuinely listening to them. And that was an interesting experience in the seventies. I then had the great opportunity of working alongside a guy called Gary Hawkes for 20 years. We actually shared an office and watching him, the way he applied leadership, what his values were and how he conducted himself, that was a major impact. I then also had the chance at very close quarters to see a couple of what I term business tycoons. One was Lord Forte and the other was Pierre Bellon, both extremely successful business people who have built and Pierre Bellon still does control, you know, a great empire and seeing how they conducted leadership, what worked for them, what didn't work, et cetera. And through all of them, I was able to think, well, yes, I think that's right, that's good, that I can live with that, I think that's the right thing to do. Or sometimes you think, well, no, that's not the way I want to do things. So that when you eventually become a leader, you can actually put into practice what you've learnt. And a couple of areas I want to explore about what you've learnt from these people is obviously developing teams and it's the people around you that actually make leadership work. Secondly, leaders are not just business leaders, tactical leaders making financial decisions. I think all leaders also have to have what I term a moral dimension, the difference between right and wrong, what is the right thing to do? Because people watch you, people observe, and I can tell you, the guy at the top of an organisation does matter. He sets the tone and the context. And if, as you say, if it's rotten at the top, the whole organisation will soon become rotten. Another element I just want to throw out is whilst the guy at the top matters, leadership goes right down an organisation and particularly in our sector, you know, it's about the head chef in the kitchen, it's about the restaurant manager, it's about the hotel manager, the unit manager in a contract catering unit, it's about any person who has a group of people working around him with him. They take their ideas and their culture hopefully from the guy at the top, but it's how they exercise those same values that absolutely matter. So, that's the context of leadership as far as I'm concerned. But I now just want to throw out a few thoughts about where we find ourselves today and how we can begin to look forward because I actually think the task of today's and tomorrow's leaders is quite frankly infinitely more complex than it was when I started off. I want to throw out a few thoughts. Today's leaders, I think, have got to be much more aware of industry's place in society, work's place in society and how they interact with the society in which they work, not just so they understand their customers and their staff, but actually the social changes going on around them. I mean, just in the last six, nine months, whether it's climate change and the various activism surrounding that or whether it's Black Lives Matter or whether it's the Me Too movement, all these issues do have impact on society and on our workforces. We now also have to deal with a multicultural workforce. I've always taken the view that for me, when I worked in the Middle East, the greatest lesson I ever worked, I learnt about working in Saudi Arabia and Bahrain and the Lebanon was I had to manage a multicultural workforce, Muslims, Hindus, et cetera. And what I learnt from that experience of managing a multicultural workforce is there are no right ways and wrong ways of thinking and doing things, there are just different ways of doing things. One has to be able to harness those different ways of doing things with a common vision and a common objective. Another area I think we have to explore is modern communication tools, you know, social media, et cetera, particularly, you know, how you communicate and develop an understanding with people when they may be at a distance online. How can you win hearts and minds when maybe you can't necessarily go and meet people all the time? That is going to be a challenge for the future. And I throw in a final thought, which I think is important, and I think this industry and its leaders have always been very poor, is about actually understanding the political process. I always had to explain to a lot of senior businessmen that what matters to MPs actually is being re-elected and getting votes. That's what matters. So, if we want to persuade politicians to understand hospitality, we have to persuade them that our sector matters in electoral terms. I think we've started to do that more recently. Secondly, I think we have to understand what is the role of government. And I have to tell you, the role of government normally is not to help special cases and not to prop up failing industries or failing businesses. And I think that is going to be particularly appropriate in the next year, 18 months. The role of government and the role of government tax paid money is to help the transition process so that if an industry is going through transition, large numbers being made redundant, et cetera, it will put money in to help the transition, but it will not put money in just to prop up the business. And that is why I think the lobbying we have done just recently on behalf of hospitality to the government was about a temporary VAT reduction and a whole range of measures to try and get consumer confidence back. But these are temporary measures to ease the transition. They are not long-term and the long-term solution has to get business back up and running. And if we start pleading special case to prop up failing businesses, that will not be successful. So, I think those are some of the challenges that today's leaders are going to have to face is how we find a way through these issues of perhaps less business around for the foreseeable future, finding a new way of doing business which is perhaps less costly because we're going to have to take cost out, we are going to require less staff, but we have to find a way forward. And perhaps the majority of our staff in the immediate future as well are going to be, shall I say, British-based staff and not dependent on Eastern Europeans. So, there are some real challenges there to persuade a domestic workforce that hospitality is a place for them to work and to find a future. And that may require us paying higher wages and higher benefits, i.e. in some ways increasing the cost model to be able to attract those people, but we have to come up with a business model that produces a bottom line, otherwise it isn't worth doing it. So, those are some of the challenges and I welcome any thoughts on that, Chris.
Bob, you've given us a lot there to start with. Can I start with the political piece first because it's always the most controversial?
Yeah.
There's still a lot of, because I agree with what you're saying, there's a lot of discussion still going on about what more can government do with hospitality? Isn't that, isn't the point that at some point we've just got to get going again?
Yes, and I think, to be fair, the politicians have got the message that hospitality does matter because it does provide employment for 2 million people and the 2 million people tend to be the lower-paid, younger people or very, or much older people, disadvantaged people, all what I term the challenging groups. So, that's the politics that the government does recognise that hospitality does that. But I can tell you, they are not going to pour money in indefinitely just to sort of, as it were, keep businesses alive. And I sort of have a view that what's happened in the last four, five months is going to result in a shakeout in our sector, which exactly, which probably would have taken five years under natural circumstances to happen, but it's just been concertinaed into five or six months. And I see that particularly in what I term the casual dining sector in the high street where there were quite frankly too many food operators and two highly leveraged balance sheets weren't going to survive ultimately. I think probably in contract catering, we would have seen over the next five years a reduction of people working in big offices in London. It would have happened very gradually, but now it's been, you know, it's been brought about much quicker, more quickly. And maybe people want a less elaborate service in the future at their place of work, you know, delivered food, sandwiches, et cetera. So, I think, you know, a lot of those changes have been brought forward and, you know, are now happening much more quickly. But as I say, I was always staggered by the lack of, almost interest by senior business players in our sector about how politics actually work and how politicians can help you if you, if you understand how they operate as well.
Isn't one of the core problems we face right now, and I accept all that, is how do you get government working again? Because until you get government back to work, you're not going to get business back to work, are you?
Well, and that's a good point and that is why I suspect what Boris Johnson is going to be announcing later on this afternoon because quite frankly, there's probably, there's what, 700,000 people on what you might term the government payroll, a large number of whom are working from home at the moment. So, by example, I think they will try and get as many of those people back into the office as they can over the next couple of months, for example, because, you know, whilst, yes, people, a lot of people like working from home and in some ways you can, you know, they are doing their job just as well from home, they are going to be encouraging people back to work and I think the government will lead by example.
The really interesting one for hospitality, isn't it, is I think during this change, the real thing everyone's learnt is more about community and actually a real enhanced desire for people to work in communities. And that gives us hospitality a new opportunity, doesn't it?
Well, it will do. I mean, I mean, being blunt, being blunt about it, and we saw it a little bit with the pub sector over the last five years when we went from, you know, sort of 65,000 pubs down to 50,000 pubs, but the 50,000 pubs now are of better quality and they offer a range of food, drink and, you know, much better services. I think what we're going to see, for instance, in the coffee shop and the sandwich shops and whatever, over the next year, 18 months, a lot of those that sort of grew up in city centre locations, quite frankly, will either not reopen or not survive, but a lot will reopen in what I term edge of town areas, which in the past, they weren't really profitable. So, there will be, there will be quite a lot of, I think, relocation of business, shall we say.
Well, I think that's one of the things we've been talking a lot about is city centres are going to have to change the way they operate to engage people back.
Well, you know, ultimately, yes, because I do think whilst you can work from home, you know, ultimately, I think we are quite social animals and we do actually quite like to get back and meet up with our fellow workforce, shall we say. So, I'm not entirely sort of convinced of the argument that people will work 100% from home, but I do see this mixture of, you know, a couple of days a week from home and three days in the office, whatever. And the support businesses will have to respond and react to that.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I mean, obviously, we're going to face a recession coming forward, which is obviously going to be quite deep and long-lasting, isn't it?
I think there is, I think that is self-evident and it's going to be a long, slow movement out of it, but in all, in all these economic cycles, there will be opportunities for those who are swift-moving and see new opportunities in the marketplace. And I just think we've got to be, you know, as I say, I was, you know, I thought it was a very interesting sign of the times, I think we discussed last time, you know, the Compass acquisition in Southern Ireland where, you know, they've essentially bought a delivered food company. I see also they've acquired a technology for a delivered food app. Yeah?
Yep.
And this is what we're going to see, these sort of developments. I just, I just think to think it was going to go back to the way things were is not the case. And, and I think if we look sector by sector, certainly in contract food services, you know, those who've been highly dependent on central London business in big offices and high-end hospitality in big offices and a lot of event-type business are going to suffer the most in the short term. That doesn't mean there won't be a niche for delivered food, et cetera, to those who do come into work. In the hotel sector, I think central London is going to have a major problem for the next couple of years because, you know, they are highly dependent on inbound tourism, which I can't see recovering in the next six months or so, whereas outside London, I think and outside the cities, you will find hotels doing relatively brisk business, the same with restaurants. So, it's going to be a little, it's a shift from the city centres out into the, into the regions and the suburbs even, God forbid.
And actually, that could be quite an exciting change in some ways as well.
Well, that's right and that's where there will be opportunities. And it is up to, you know, leaders actually to see where the new opportunities are and a, and, you know, the classic thing that contract food service has always been able to do, what it essentially has, it is two talents, are skilled people and logistics skills. And it's about moving your talented people and your logistic skills to where the new business is. I always tell the story of, when I was involved in writing the history of Gardener Merchant, it started off as a business, as a coffee shop business, it was then vitrualling the fleet in the First World War. In the thirties, it was then a major exhibition supplier at Earl's Court, big events. In the Second World War, it was factory feeding. Then the seventies and eighties, it became office feeding. The nineties, it moved into facilities management. And it shows the evolution of the company, that you move the skills and the logistic skills that you have to where the opportunity is. And that's what we have to recognise is we've got these skilled people, we understand logistics and food service issues, et cetera. Where can we move that to where the next opportunity is? And there will be opportunity because people always need and want to eat, shall we say. Hello?
Looks like Chris has gone.
I'm back again.
You're back.
His chair, by the way, to think. There we go, good. I didn't hear that last point, by the way, just because you didn't guess that.
I just got your message to say you're out.
Yeah, there we go, I'm back in again. It was a bit strange, everyone freaks on front of me, but there we go. One of the things I do want to touch on is about communication, how communication's going to change.
Yeah.
And my big worry is also about young people because young people in 2008, '09 took a hit and actually they're taking a hit 10 years on as well. And actually, there is this whole, there's this whole model that's developing where actually young people are building up greater and greater debt, but also the age of people getting senior roles is getting later and later as well. Is there an argument?
I think it's going to be a real issue, Chris, and particularly what I term, I won't say the very young, but the sort of the 17, 18, 19, 20-year-olds who we're now trying to introduce into the workforce for the first time, you know, this is going to be a very difficult time to introduce those young people into the workforce because, you know, so much of what you learn, you do actually genuinely learn from alongside other people. There's a limit to what you can learn online. And I've had some experience working with a specialist companies in this area about how you communicate online with diverse workforces. And what you find is it's great for doing, for sending information around, for sending out shift patterns, for learning online, a whole range of things, but there are some things it cannot do and you do need actually to get people together occasionally. And it's going to be a real challenge for us, you know, in the future about how, one, we do use modern communication tools particularly for the young to keep them informed, keep them involved, keep them engaged, but combine that with what I term more traditional ways of motivating people, showing people how to do things and winning hearts and minds.
Well, I think that's the challenge, that's my worry because I think a lot of young people are feeling a bit disillusioned at the moment, which you can understand.
Well, I think the latest figures show that. I think the latest applications for university for this coming year are at their highest ever, which says to me that essentially they've decided that it is better to go to a university course, whatever the course is for three years, put off seeking work and hopefully in three years' time, things have settled down a bit.
But we've also got ourselves into a model, which is understandable, as more venture capital money is coming to businesses where experience is vital in leadership and actually younger people aren't given the same opportunity that probably we were during our years of development.
Oh, I'm sure that is the case. I can speak from vivid experience. Whilst, let's just say, involving capital venture companies may enrich you and I was a beneficiary of that, I can actually tell you in hindsight that I think the majority of them actually ruin the businesses that they get involved with because they actually take out more money than they put in. And I've always taken the view that responsible ownership is about understanding the dynamic between the workforce, you as the owner, and the customers. There's a sort of a three-way dynamic, whereas I think capital venture see it as a process of how can they extract the most money out of a business for their investment in as short a time as possible. And successful business is always about the long term. It's about long-term relationship with your customers, it's about long-term relationships with your staff and it's about long-term success. I would rather have a business that grows 3% to 5% per annum every year forever than a business that can be made to look as if it's grown by 20% to 25% in one year and then sold off to another owner. You know, you learn that that is not possible, particularly in the hospitality sector. And I think we've suffered a lot from capital venture companies who've come in and taken a short-term view because they saw an opportunity to make some money very quickly, extracted their money and left the businesses to founder. And one looks at Travel Lodge or Casual Dining Group or Calucio's or, you know, Iguana, I can run off a whole list of companies where that is the case.
And I suppose my question is, do we think we'll see a change now? This market does allow for that change to happen where young people need to be empowered more?
Well, I think two things. One is I think we will see a change that the capital venture companies won't be so interested in hospitality in the foreseeable future, which I think is a good thing. Secondly, perhaps we might see an explosion of what I term entrepreneurial activity from the younger people of setting up their own businesses, you know, which is no bad thing either. You know, in the same way that, you know, you see it, you know, what was, you know, really fascinating to see over the last 15 years was the rise of the successful entrepreneurs who came into this country from overseas, from India, from Pakistan, from East Africa, et cetera, whether it's, you know, Sarinder Aura, Jasminda Singh, the Mathrani brothers, whole range of people came to this country with nothing, saw hospitality as an opportunity, started with nothing and made very successful businesses. This sector does have that ability to start with nothing and build a business if you find the right opportunity. So, I'm hopeful that maybe we might get an explosion of young entrepreneurial people who start their own business in this sector.
Well, actually, I think that is what's going to happen, it's a natural thing to see, isn't it?
It is and, and they are a different type of person, but they will manage then ultimately in a different way and maybe that is going to be the way of the future because, as you say, I mean, I've regretted in many ways, you know, I was given an opportunity to be on the board of Gardener Merchant when I was 29, you know, and, you know, you learnt as you went along, but we had a very young team that gradually developed. Nowadays, it seems you've almost got to be in your, your late 40s or 50s before you're given what I term board experience amongst our big hospitality companies. And then I look at a lot of the big hospitality companies and so few of them actually have hospitality people on the boards. You know, there are very, very few hospitality operators on the boards of our major companies. They're sort of experts in a range of fields, but they don't understand hospitality.
I get that completely.
And I think if you look back, if you look back at Charles Allen's board when he ran Compass in the early days or Gary Hawke's board or, or even, you know, even Lord Forte's board or Pierre Bellon's board, they were all packed with senior operating people who fundamentally understood the industry in which they're in. I look at some of our... I look at some of our senior listed companies now, and, you know, they're run by people who aren't from the hospitality industry, and I don't actually think they understand what is hospitality about. And I've always said hospitality essentially is a very simple business. It's about persuading people to come to your restaurant, your hotel, your contract catering place, give them great food and service, so they're satisfied and want to return. And it's the wanting to return is what it's all about. You don't want a one-off purchase, you want regular customers who like your food and service and want to return. That's what's hospitality, and that's what produces organic growth, the return customer. So we're not selling widgets in a one-off sale, we're selling a service where people enjoy the experience, think they've had great value for money for the food and service, and want to return. And it's the wanting to return is what hospitality is.
I wanted to now just move on to lessons we can learn from the past, if that's okay, because you have worked, obviously, with a whole range of great leaders over the years.
Yeah.
We have Pierre Bellon, obviously, Forte, Lord Forte, Gary Hawke, obviously, and even in government, the ministers.
I'm afraid I had meetings with Mr Blair and others as well, yes.
So what, which one can we learn the most from in terms of this point?
Um, in a strange way, I think Pierre Bellon, one could learn a lot from, because he, whilst he had a very French way of what I term running a business, for want of a better word, i.e. fairly highly centralised control, he understood very clearly that business has to evolve and constantly change, and you can't just keep doing the same thing. That, you know, if you've got to move from being a food service company to an FM company, that's what you have to do, even though you might sort of, in your heart of hearts, be a food company. If, you know, if you can do the cleaning, the housekeeping, the laundry, et cetera, et cetera, that is what you move into as well. And he was very adept at doing that. The other person I honestly think that we could learn something from is Gary Hawke's. And the reason I quote Gary was the, he really did understand that it's people that achieve things for you as the leader, nothing else. And you have to be able to win people's hearts and minds. You can't just tell people what to do, you can't just sort of send them an email or whatever. People have to want to do something, and it's how you win hearts and minds is going to be, I think, one of the real key challenges for the future. That winning hearts and minds, whether it's through modern technology or other methods, that is the key. It's people that achieve things, and it's that winning hearts and minds, I think, is going to be the key, whether it's people from different cultures, whether it's young people, old people, how you win those hearts and minds of your team to move forward.
Which goes into what Gary was very good at, and all of them, you worked with, very good visibility, weren't they? They're always felt very accessible to people.
Well, it's interesting, some of them had what you might term a different outside perception, but if I can give you examples of all of them, you know, they may appear to have sort of never listened to anyone, and always been stubborn, and always did what it is they wanted to do. I can actually tell you, that is absolutely wrong. They had a view that, in private, you argued out the various issues, and the rights and wrongs, and what you should or shouldn't do, or what, how we should do things. But then, when we had an agreed line, everyone stuck to the agreed line. I can tell you, more than half the time we had discussions, all those men had the ability to change their mind on reflection. So they would argue a particular point, they'd come to a board meeting, or come to meeting Pierre Bellon, Gary Hawke, Lord Forte, where they say, this is what I want to do, this is dot, et cetera, et cetera, and say in fairly strong terms what they wanted to do. There would then, in private, be a fairly lengthy discussion, particularly if people around the table didn't agree. They would never concede at the meeting, and then the next day, they would come into the office, having absorbed what was said at the meeting, and say, right, I've come to a consensus view, and I think this is what we ought to do, are we all happy with this? And off we went. They had that ability to sort of listen when you thought they weren't listening, and sense what the right mood was, what the right consensus was. And to me, that was the art of almost great leadership, was not being pig-headed about always getting your own way, but be able to listen and absorb, and find the way forward that everyone could commit to.
Well, you worked through quite a number of dramas, didn't you? Because with the early nineties, obviously, a huge recession as well, wasn't it? And I think that's probably when you did your MBO.
We did indeed, we actually did our MBO on Black Wednesday. If I tell you that, if I tell you that in the morning, interest rates were eight per cent, and by three o'clock, they were fifteen per cent, and that was decision day on whether we went ahead with our MBO. And it was literally done by the flip of a coin, for want of a better word, and we signed off that evening. Unfortunately, interest rates came down from fifteen to twelve to ten per cent. The first few months were fairly difficult in meeting your covenants on borrowings, because we had borrowed at, you know, twenty-five, thirty per cent, short-term borrowings. But that was a classic V recession, where the recession was fairly severe in ninety-three, early ninety-four, but by ninety-five, had recovered very rapidly. So that was that experience. I think this time round, we're not going to have a V-type recession, I think it's going to be a, what I term, a very long U recession, if I could put it in those terms, that things will gradually improve, but it will take a much longer period. And I think that is going to be the challenge of how we manage and work our way through what I term a slow recovery.
Which I suppose goes back to the eighties, doesn't it?
Much more, and I say to people who've got longer, well, your memory's not quite as long, Chris, I remember the biggest challenge we had in the eighties, in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, in contract food service, we reached twenty-seven per cent food inflation for a three or four month period. So it was literally a matter of every, every month, you were adjusting your canteen prices, and adjusting dishes, adjusting everything, because you were working through twenty-seven per cent food inflation, which I think modern-day management would find horrific. But you found ways of managing your way through.
I mean, I think that's the point, isn't it? In those days, because it was less controlled, people were allowed more freedom to try and innovate and find solutions.
Well, I think that is the message from today onwards, there aren't any firm yeses and no's, we actually just have to find as many different solutions as we can, we have to draw on all our staff to come up with ideas of, you know, how we can work our way through this, how we can survive. And I, you know, I think the example of what the hospitals have done, and how they've had to adapt to the coronavirus, I think is a great example in three or four months, how that whole health sector has adapted to that major challenge. And I think we as, in the hospitality sector, have got to recognise, it isn't going to go back to the way it was, we've got to adapt what our offerings are, whether it's range of menus, the way we serve the food, the way the food is produced, the way we interact with customers, the way we take orders. Every little process, for example, in what we do, we have to explore to see if there are better ways, new ways, different ways of providing that service to the customer. Because at the end of the day, the key is to provide a service that the customer is happy with and is willing to pay for, and we've got to come up with, you know, of innovative ways of doing that.
I mean, I think that's the interesting piece. We talked earlier in the summer, didn't we, about cleanliness being a really key piece?
Yeah.
And safety, and I think that's, most of the companies have now solved that one. Now, it's about how do you actually engage your trust back with the consumer?
Yeah, and I'm a little disappointed, I mean, I strongly, sort of, in fact, I was in touch with the government quite a bit, about, I was strongly in favour of a temporary VAT cut for our sector, as a special measure just for our sector, to try and get a shot of confidence, because that's what we need to start getting people back to use our services. And I have to say, if there are operators who don't pass on that reduction, and think they're going to pocket the difference because they're in difficulties, one, I think that will destroy any confidence with the consumer, and certainly destroy any relationship with the government that we might want on a go-forward basis. We have to, you know, sort of, I think the government has been extraordinarily generous in giving this temporary reduction in VAT, you know, it's essentially a thirteen and a half per cent reduction in price. You know, we should be using that in every way possible to get customers back. If anything, we should be sort of what I term enhancing it. So the government's given us a thirteen and a half per cent reduction on price because of VAT, maybe, you know, we should add, you know, bung in another five, seven per cent ourselves, so that we can actually take twenty per cent off the selling price. We've got to start getting customers back and building up that confidence.
Yeah, the, I mean, that's a really great debate, you'll be interested to hear some people's views on that one in a second, because I know a lot of those parts, those cuts aren't being passed on.
Well, as I say, and I think one is, that will destroy any relationship with government that, you know, we've managed to achieve in the last few months, that we, you know, that we did deserve what I term special consideration for a short-term period. And, you know, if we ever go back to them for anything in the future, you know, I think, I think, you know, my discussions with government on an ongoing basis have been, give us the VAT reduction for six months to sort of kick-start confidence, and then maybe after that, over the next twelve months, if you need to put VAT back, then give us a reduction in national insurance for a year to help on the employment side. And so that's the discussions I've been having, sort of, because this is all about what I term easing the transfer of, you know, from being maybe a sector employing two and a half million people, that maybe will only employ one point seven five million in the future, and those people will work in other areas, you know, part of the transitional approach. But if we, if we blow what they've offered us on the VAT reduction, I think we can forget about any future help.
Now, I've got a question here for you, which is asked from Stefan. Who do you see as the standout leaders during this crisis, firstly in business, and then secondly in hospitality?
Well, it's interesting, I mean, I'm not going to comment on too many, on wider things, but I thought in the very early days, it's people, the people I judge, or those who I think, whose basic instincts were right from the beginning, and there were a couple of examples. I thought it was really interesting that almost in the first week or two of the crisis, the chief executive of Best Western Hotels offered all Best Western Hotels to the government if key workers needed accommodation. You know, no nonsense, straight off, I thought, what a great example of what needed to be done straight away to show that he understood how important the key workers were going to be. Yeah?
Yeah.
Secondly, and it's a smaller one, an old friend of mine called Mike Matthews runs a hotel up in Shropshire, and he gave his, he's the owner, and he's, I think it's a forty-odd-bed hotel, the Beaufort Arms, he gave the hotel to the council to help all the sleepers off the street, to say they could use his hotel for the whole time, to help them get people off the street, those vulnerable people. You know, two examples I thought of, the instinct was right straight away, it wasn't, you know, sort of, you know, can I afford this, how much is it going to cost, it's what is the right thing to do, what is the instinct to do the right thing straight away? Yeah?
Yeah.
Later on, some of our London hotels, I know the Strand Hotel has done some great work, Maybourne Group, a member of individual hotels, but I thought, it's that first reaction, I thought, some of our bigger properties were a bit slow at responding to the immediate response, if I can put it in those terms.
I mean, there's been some great, the hospitality industry has stepped up during this period of time, hasn't it? It's done some great.
Well, I think there's been, and exactly, and I think, to be fair, Hospitality Action, the charity, has done outstanding work, and I think UK Hospitality and Kate Nichol and her team have, you know, really worked hard and done a great job on behalf of the sector in lobbying terms. Though I say, I think, some of the, you know, Mark Lewis and his team at Hospitality Action, and the way that, it's interesting, not a lot of big companies, but a lot of individuals and smaller companies have really supported Hospitality Action in a big way. I haven't seen big support from the big corporates for Hospitality Action, but I've seen it from a lot of the privately-owned hotel groups, elite hotels, exclusive hotels, a lot of the Pride of Britain hotels, you know, contract caterers, et cetera. Been very good, and I think that has proven that, you know, we do have a soul, and we do understand, and we do care for people. I think it's been a great example.
And isn't there, isn't there a good argument from this period of time, that hospitality will now, can take a more central role, generally? Because it's always been, the industry hasn't been well-respected enough, it has probably changed that a bit.
I think it's, well, for the time being, as, I remember a little story I had, when I was sort of handling the foot and mouth crisis with Alistair Campbell and his cohorts, I used to have sort of a weekly meeting with Alistair Campbell, and sort of see Blair from time to time. He said at the time, actually, this has done more for hospitality and tourism than anything else has ever done, because there's a daily briefing paper produced within government, goes to every government minister on a daily basis, of the key issues, and for the first time ever at that time, hospitality and tourism was top of the list, so that ministers actually understood for the first time what it did. And I know that's been repeated this time round, that over the last few weeks, as it were, the issues of employment and hospitality have been top of the, what I term, the internal government briefing document to all ministers. The worry I have is that the world does move on, and in six, nine months' time, if we're in Brexit issues or something else happens, politicians soon forget yesterday's problem, if you understand what I mean. And the challenge for us will be to keep what we've gained in understanding of our sector to the fore with politicians, and do it in a constructive, sensible way, that, you know, what we can do for society, and what we can do for society is employ as many people as possible, who you might call from the difficult groups, we actually, you know, provide a lot of caring services for long-term care people through hospitality, you know, show that side of what we can also do for society, not just in collecting taxes and in providing employment, but essentially being almost like a service to society as well.
Now, before, we're going in obviously short on time, but one thing I want to touch on is the media and leadership, because that does impact, doesn't it now? And there seems to be a disconnect with the media now, they seem to have their own bubble, which is slightly different to the man in the general person in the street.
Well, and that is something we actually have to understand. I'm not sure a lot of our leaders actually understand modern media. I think Kate Nichol's done a pretty good job, but I think some of our business leaders have got to sort of understand modern media much more as well, and, you know, you do, you know, the standard, the standard response I always say to senior business leaders is, I'm afraid you, it's part of your job, you have to do as much media as you can, and if ever you're contacted by the media, you must respond. If you take the view, I'm only going to respond to when it's something favorable, what you find is, you gradually get excluded. You've got to be there to be able to answer your case, whether it's good news or bad news, because I'm afraid in the modern world, we do need the media, whether it's what I term the Westminster Bubble Media, or the wider media, and we've got to learn the way we use it. If I just give a little story, I think, my very first week of handling corporate affairs for Gardener Merchant Sedexo was the week- was, um, the week of the Piper Alpha disaster. And, um, I had a fairly vitriolic exchange with a particular journalist who I thought was asking all the wrong questions. And I must admit, I lost my temper on the phone. And I had to sit down and think about it and then I had to go and find him out the next day and put my arms around him because you understand the media actually always has the last word and they do matter. And that's the way we have to work with the media. They are the people that, um, have such a wide influence and wide contact with millions of people. So we have to understand that and work with them, whether we like them or not. And I think for every person in leadership, media training should be one of the basic tools of learning to do the job.
Uh, just to finish on Brexit, shall we? Because it's become the kind of subject that's almost been forgotten and it still probably is the next punch we've got to face.
Well, I, and I think that I still sort of have a view that some form of deal will be put together between now and Christmas, shall we say? Because I think it would be a failure of everyone if there isn't some form of deal. Whether it's a deal that either side can claim a success, I don't know. But I think, you know, I, I take the view that, you know, if we're looking in five years hence, it'll be as much a failure by Barney and the EU if a deal isn't reached as it is by Boris Johnson and his team. You know, both sides need a deal, so they should, they need to come up with some solutions. So I, I, I still feel that it is that important that some form of deal is found, that it's about the political will. And if the political will is there, I think a deal can be done, quite frankly, in twenty-four hours. It's getting the politics right.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So final question, uh, if we, if we fast forward five years, what do you hope we see? What changes do you hope we see?
I would like to think that in five years' time, obviously, I, I have no doubts that tourism and hospitality will always be a flourishing sector because people like to eat, they like to enjoy themselves and they're sociable beings. So there will always be a strong hospitality and tourism sector. I would like to think in five years' time though, that we've recognized that the people who work in hospitality are, let's just say, worth more than they've been recognized in the past and that we end up having a business model where we have far more highly skilled people and better paid so that the sector can hold its head up as being a great place in which to work and enjoy a decent standard of living for the ordinary people who work in the sector, not just the, uh, senior people at the top.
Well, Bob, on that note, I think that's great. Thank you very much for your time today. It's always great to have you on board.
No, thank you. It's always enjoyable and, you know, let, let's hope that, uh, next time we speak, it'll be in slightly better circumstances.
Well, I think, I think we've got a few challenges to get through before then. I look forward to speaking to you again on.
But, you know, but I, I can tell you, they are all achievable, all these challenges. It's just a, you know, an attitude of mine to let, let's achieve it and let's do it.
Well, I suppose that's the point, isn't it? Is actually the attitude of mine is what we've got to get right.
Exactly.
And thank you. And thank you to everyone joining us today. And, uh, have a great weekend and I look forward to speaking to you again soon.
Okay. Take care. Good cheer, everyone.
Bye-bye.